Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Dr. John Byers of the First United Methodist Church, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Good evening and let us pray. Our gracious God and Heavenly Father, the giver of every good and perfect gift, the gift of liberty and justice, as we pause to honor the symbol of our republic, we pause to give thanks for this marvelous experiment in representative democracy, where every citizen is invited to share his or her insights. We give thanks for these elected officers of this representative democracy, that you would grant to them the gift of wisdom and insight, that decisions made would be for the benefit of all, and that their decisions collectively would raise all of us up to live into your call of liberty and justice. For every good blessing for this great city, for our beloved country, and for this moment in time, we give you thanks, and pray always in the name of the one true God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and the God of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Together we say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Dr. Byers. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on May 24th. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Tonight, we have three public hearings on the agenda. The first is a public hearing to receive comments on a request to rezone property located on Daniel Street from corridor mixed use to traditional neighborhood residential. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This public hearing was properly advertised. At this time, we would take any public comment.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to be heard on this rezoning request? Okay, seeing none, I'll declare that public hearing closed, and I will move to the public hearing to receive comments on a request to rezone property located on Cotton Road from Campus General Industrial to corridor mixed use. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. Again, Mr. Mayor, this hearing was properly advertised, and we would take any comments at this time.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to make a comment on this rezoning request? Okay, seeing none, I'll declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to a public hearing to receive comments on the 2022-2023 budget.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing was properly advertised, and we would take comments at this time.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to comment on the 2022-2023 budget? If you'll come forward to the podium, identify yourself by name for the record, and make any comments you would like directed towards the city mayor and council.
Hello. It's good to see everyone again.
Good to see you, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Littlefield. I'm the chairman of the Democratic Party, and I would just like to say I don't envy all of this position with trying to come up with a balanced budget. Believe it or not, us folks in the Democratic Party don't want our utilities bills to go up either. Now, from what I read, I never did actually get a copy of everything and look at it, but while I read in the newspaper of the programs that were looking to cut, we looked, I looked through them all, and I told everybody, you know, our committee, that, you know, we're only going to pick one hill to die on here, so I'm going to come here and ask them for one thing. And the one thing that I talked to the committee about, and we wanted to come ask, was that you not cut the funding for the Harmony House. You know, as a matter of conscience, we honestly just can't see, even at the expense of, what was it, like $12,000 or whatever spread across there? I mean, we just, in good conscience, we just can't support cutting funding for shelter for domestic abuse. You know, of course, that's not going to solve the problem, that $12,000, because I think it's a problem we only see the tip of the iceberg on. And, you know, I've spoken with several community leaders. I even briefly spoke with the chief of police Saturday about it, and I know he's got some ideas to work with that, and, you know, if y'all have already worked that out, that's great. But the Democratic Party would like to ask that you not cut the budget for the Harmony House. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anybody else in council chambers want to make a comment for the council about the budget proposal?
Oh, I'm Sam. Mr. Bry Fogel is my name. I'm a resident of LaGrange, and I don't know much about the workings of the city at all, let alone the budget. I've read topically about what's going on with the newspaper articles about some cuts to the budget related to recycling program, curbside recycling, as well as some nonprofit agencies, the city funds. I assume that's correct. I don't really know. I haven't seen the numbers, but I am concerned that the city continue to have a forethoughtful approach to the, to its management and to its intent, and not be short-sighted about this year's budget necessarily. So I guess what I'm saying is don't cut off our nose and spite of our faces. We have an up-and-running primordial system for co-mingling recyclables. I understand it may be extremely expensive. I don't know the numbers. I haven't verified that the numbers have been run right. I assume you all do that. Part of my concern is that we've trained our citizenry to co-mingle recyclables, so at least we're separating recyclables from trash, but, you know, we don't want to waste resources. None of us do. It's a cost savings matter in the long run to think about not wasting resources. Now, I understand this recycling business may be costing the city money, but have we given it our whole shoulder to determine, is it a numbers thing? Can we get more people involved and make it a little more cost-effective? Is it, is it a marketing thing? Y'all know better than I. But, so my concern is we might be sending mixed signals to our population. So all of a sudden, we train them how to co-mingle after they've been separating trash for years and taking places. So we give them this great alternative. It's all right in their front door. They just take it all out. So now, we're going to have to retrain people about how to separate their trash and create a place in their home to separate the recyclables so that they can take them to the, the few of us that might, to the convenience center, I suppose you call it Davis Road. And so when we ever get to the point where we want to, and we're able to be more financially beneficial in recycling, it's going to be another topsy-turvy, retrain citizenry. And anyway, that's one of my concerns. I know that it's not easy to convince folks trying to represent the citizens that live in the city right now that there's a long-term benefit to being a progressive, proactive city, demonstrating to the rest of the country that, and their citizens that might move here, that this is a great place and a progressive place to live, some place to desire to live, where things are, people are thinking about taking care of the environment, improving our lot, and not adding to the problems of our society, which I consider our landfills to be a short-term solution. I mean, we can throw, it's going to, so there is a cost to putting all these recyclables in the landfill. And I don't know if that's been thrown in the mix as well. I mean, it's going to shorten the life of the landfill, whatever. Is that, is that an issue? So anyway, I implore, encourage y'all to consider revisiting, if not reassessing, the opportunities that recycling at our doorsteps may provide. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate your comments on that, and I also did get your voicemail this afternoon, late in the afternoon, so I will, I'll give you a shout back about that as well. Just to let you know, I did receive it. Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment about the proposed 2022-23 budget? You going to disagree with everything Sam said? Probably what my wife would do.
I'll probably repeat it. And I only got here when he had already started because I get nervous in front of people, and I was trying to write it all down in the car before I came in. Anyway, so yes, I'm hoping that you will reconsider the curbside recycling.
Just for the record, can you identify?
My name is Laura Bry Fogel, and I feel like I know all of you, but you don't know me. But I've been a resident here in LaGrange for 30 years, and we've seen it grow in many good ways, and we want to stay here. We've had several times where we thought, should we leave? Should we stay? We, we love it here. Anyway, so yes, I'm here to talk about curbside recycling, and I am urging you to please keep it. It makes LaGrange a better place to live. It makes us a more responsible community. It gives us the opportunity to do our part, to take care of the earth. I was just thinking, why, why do we even want to recycle? I know a lot of people do, but a lot of people don't. I mean, the bottom line to me is just, it's just, just the right thing to do, to make recycling as easy as we can for people. I feel that as humans, part of what we're here to do is to take care of this earth and the, the other creatures that are on the earth, and by recycling, we are not going to be having to drill for oil as much, or cut down as many trees, or we're reusing the resources, and it's just very important to give people opportunities and make it easy. People are busy, and if you can put it all in, what you put in, all your stuff in recyclables in this can, all the other stuff in the other can, then you roll it down to the street, hopefully, we will have a lot of people doing that, a lot more than having to go back to what we were doing and putting it in seven different bins, trying to find a place for that, and then loading it up in the car and taking it to Davis Road. And also, I've heard from people that live out in, in the county that there really not that many recycling opportunities anymore. I don't know, because I've been so lucky to have curbside recycling. Oh, I was going to tell you also about some of my, some new people I know that are in town. My across-the-street neighbor, she moved here from Noonan, and then her daughters had been living in Peachtree City and Atlanta, and they're all willing to commute over there to live in LaGrange, where they say they enjoy a slower pace. They have that recycling bin out there every time, and I'm sure the communities that they come from had curbside recycling. And if we take that away, I'm thinking people that want to live in LaGrange for our quality of life here, they're looking at stuff like that. There's another friend of mine who, she said, "We moved here. What really sold us was the thread. We had this place to walk. It's wonderful." But I think curbside recycling goes along with that, and I just hope that you will think very carefully, and please don't cut that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in council chambers would like to make a comment on
Good evening.
My name is Judy Lawrence, and I'd just like to echo what the other speakers have said about curbside recycling, but also to add, I moved here about 20 years ago from a town in Alabama that was not known for being very progressive, but we had had curbside recycling for a number of years. And to me, to go back to a situation where we don't have that anymore is like going back, say, 70 years ago and saying, "All right, we're going to move to a town that doesn't have indoor plumbing." It's just something that you expect in a, you know, in a progressive town, and I really hope that you give that serious consideration. And I, I think in, in terms of budget, I've been out of town, so I haven't followed what's going on with all this at all, but if it does come to a point of raising utility rates, my thought would be, you know, restructure the way the rates are done, so that rather than encouraging people to use more, you encourage people to use less by charging less for the first few kilowatt-hours or whatever, and add the increase as you go up the usage, so that people are encouraged to conserve, and that might be another way to try and think about dealing with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else? Okay, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to petitions and communications. I have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to annex and zone property located at 23 Bush Drive.
Mr. Costello, again, these next reports, Mayor.
Okay, I will look to Mr. Costello.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman?
You limping?
Yes, sir. As we discussed this morning during the work session, an applicant by the name of Scott Ammerman has submitted an application in order to annex and rezone approximately three acres of property located at 23 Bush Drive. Yesterday, during a scheduled Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals meeting, this board unanimously recommended that this property be annexed and rezoned from Troup County General Industrial to Campus General Industrial. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on July the 12th.
Call for a public hearing.
Second. I have a motion second to call for a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to annex and zone property located at 118 Old Airport Road. Mr. Costello?
Yes, sir. An applicant by the name of Dick Daniel has submitted an application in order to annex and rezone roughly 1.5 acres of property located at 118 Old Airport Road. Yesterday, during a scheduled Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals meeting, this board unanimously recommended that this property be annexed and rezoned from Troup County Single Family Medium Density Residential to Campus General Business. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on July the 12th.
Motion to call.
I have a motion to second to call for a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone two parcels located on Pegasus Parkway from Campus General Industrial and Agribusiness to corridor mixed use, and one parcel from corridor medium density residential to Campus General Industrial and Agribusiness. Mr. Costello?
Yes, sir. An applicant with South Point Realty Group has submitted an application in order to rezone three parcels totaling approximately 78 acres, is located on Pegasus Parkway near Whiteville Road. Yesterday, during a scheduled Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals meeting, this board unanimously recommended that two of these parcels be rezoned from Campus General Industrial to corridor mixed use, and that one of these parcels be rezoned from corridor medium density residential to Campus General Industrial. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on July the 12th.
Motion to call for a public hearing.
Second. I have a motion to second to call for a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And we also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone property located at 617 Hill Street from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use.
Yes, sir. An applicant by the name of David Blackwell has submitted an application in order to rezone roughly an acre and a half of property located at 617 Hill Street. Yesterday, during a scheduled Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals meeting, this board unanimously recommended that this property be rezoned from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on July the 12th.
Call for a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion to second to call for a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We've been working you pretty hard, haven't we, Mr. Costello?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Keep up the good work. Under reports, do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a very short report. Periodically, I like to go through the city and see exactly what's going on, and I want to report that downtown is flourishing. It's, it's looking good, so the money and the energy that we spent to revitalize our downtown is working. It looks real good downtown. Also, I want to say, because of our city doing well and the frugal minds that we have in our staff, we still have no city tax, which is good to report. Along with that, I want to report that the park that we have under construction on, at the corner of Brown and Copper Street is looking very well, and I talked with Meg and Sue and some of the staff members, and they should, should be ready around July sometime.
We hope so. We have some more landscaping work today, so.
So it's looking real good, and just want to thank all of you all for putting in the effort to put that park there. It will be well-used. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
No report.
No report.
I got a report.
Okay.
I'd like to take this time to just express my appreciation to everyone to come out and talk about the budget, because it was a very emotional situation for us to go through it. We had to make some hard cuts. There were some lessons that were learned over the years dealing with these budgets, and then I saw, you know, an incident that took place in the paper, well, not in the paper, it actually took place, where a 14-year-old robbed somebody, and it breaks my heart in two, that we have young people out here who don't have the mentorship that is needed, that there are young men out here that, that don't have the programs that are needed. And when you do have these programs, you take them for granted, you squander the money, you play with the children, and not in a good way, and it's a lesson for all of us to learn, even with recycling. We can't take for granted what we have here in LaGrange, because the Lord giveth and the Lord taketh. If you don't appreciate what you have now, there will come a time when it will leave from you. We have to be diligent in how we spend our money, how we interact, and, and it's, it's disturbing to me. I'm not, I never really aspired to be a politician. I just wanted to do some good and make some changes. And as I sit here, I'm on the Three Rivers Board, right? As I sit here, I've never been to a meeting. I've never seen one of the Three Rivers, other than the Chattahoochee, and it's boards like that that tick me off because my time is valuable. I'm not here to play with anybody. I, I didn't get elected to make friends. I'm sorry. I came up here to do a job because there are 14-year-old kids out here that find it necessary to rob, steal, and hurt one another, and I got adults that want to do the same doggone thing. And I need people to take their positions that they have in this community serious. I need you to be focused on what the children are looking at. It hurts me to sit up here and have to say this to people, but to the grown folks out here, if you're sitting on boards, if you're over-agency, stop playing. Do your job, and if you don't want to do it, get out the way. Let somebody else do it. That's it. I'm done with my report.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. One, one comment that I did mean to make earlier as a part of the budget public hearing that I neglected to do so, but I wanted to make sure for the benefit of those who have commented, and anyone, everyone else, is that the regularly scheduled next city council meeting would have normally been on June 28th, but because of the lack of a quorum that night, we have moved the next regularly scheduled meeting to June 21st, which is next Tuesday. So that has been advertised, and we took that action last month, I think, but I just wanted y'all to understand that the, anything that comes up for first reading tonight, including the budget, as well as the zonings and so forth, the next, will be on the next council meeting, which will actually be a week from tonight, on June 21st. That's when the mayor and council will take action on these items, not on June 28th, and I think there was some confusion about that. I saw, I saw a post on Facebook that suggested otherwise, but we have moved the regular meeting from the 28th to the 21st. So that, that's already been done. Ms. Kelsey, city manager report?
You got my note, Mayor, so.
Okay, are you?
Check on that. I had that as a note.
Well, I just, I just, I meant to make sure that was stated for the record.
I appreciate you doing that. The financial statements for May, as well as the payment of bills over $2,000, are attached to your agenda materials. I don't have any particular comments. We are tracking very closely to what I presented to you three weeks ago, so I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the city manager about the financials or the bills?
No questions about the financial, but just to piggyback off of what you said, we meet again in seven days right here.
That's correct.
All right, so we're having another city council meeting next Tuesday.
That's correct.
Okay.
And not on the 28th because
Right.
of the convention and
Right.
So, yeah.
GMA.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Kelsey, the Visit LaGrange budget.
Just one last point, Mayor. We had Kathy Tilly, who's president of Visit LaGrange, at our work session this morning, and she reviewed the spending plan for that organization. Staff would recommend that council approve that budget.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Visit LaGrange budget. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
That completes my report, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to resolutions. I have a resolution authorizing the call of a special election.
As we discussed this morning, this resolution will put into place the calendar of events for the District 2B seat to fill the unexpired term of LaGrange McCamey. The election will be November 8th. Qualifying will begin July 25th on a Monday at 8:30 a.m. and end that Friday on July 29th at 4:30 p.m. The qualifying fee is $288, and we'll be publishing this shortly in the local papers.
So the, tonight's action item is for the council to issue the call, and that call specifies the dates and so forth, and then the election will be held on November 8th in conjunction with the next statewide election, and if there is a winner at that time, the council member would take the seat immediately, and if there was a runoff, it would be in December. Do you have?
December 6th.
December 6th. So those are the dates that
You make the call.
I have, is there a motion to approve the call?
I'd like to make a motion. I wish the mayor that we authorize the call on special election.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Hear ye, hear ye. I'd like to second that.
Okay, I have a second. This is obviously bittersweet, because this is not something, I mean, we're, we're glad that we're able to make the call and move forward because that's important for the citizens of LaGrange. It's obviously a somber occasion, given that the rationale is the loss. Would you like to make a comment on that?
May I say that Mr. McCamey was an excellent councilman. He was easy to work with. He brought great ideas to the council, and he helped really make District 2 a great district. We brought a lot of things into District 2, not as much as we wanted to, but we were able to bring a lot of things in District 2 with the help and the work with District 1 and the mayor. So we want to thank you all for that, but we will miss Mr. McCamey, and we will always honor and cherish his work.
That's what he's used to.
Yes.
And of course, the call has been, the call for the election was delayed, as we all know, because, because of the recent census. We had to first go through the redistricting process, which was completed in May, for, wherein we had to move 2,000 voters from District 1 into District 2. So there will be a lot of, a lot of new cards going out in the mail and things like that to let everyone know, but having completed that redistricting process, now we are able to, to issue the call for the election, and the first available date under state law for that election is the November regular election. There is no interim date that's available to us. So that's the, we're doing it the very first occasion we have. Any other comments or discussion?
He will truly be missed. I mean, I think that's why we had such a hard time with the budget, because his presence was being missed, and wow, this is why I say that we can't, we can't dilly-dally in these positions. Life is way too short. Way too short.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the call of the special election. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. We have several first readings tonight. We have an ordinance rezoning property on Daniel Street from corridor mixed use to traditional neighborhood residential.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map in order
map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on Daniel Street owned by Habitat for Humanity, Troup County, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And we have a first reading rezoning property located on Cotton Road from Campus General Industrial to Corridor Mixed Use.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on Cotton Road and owned by Charles Randall Cotton, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And I have an ordinance adopting the 2022-23 budget.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to provide for the adoption of a budget containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures for the city for the 12-month period beginning July 1, '22 and ending June 30, 2023, to provide for separability to fix an effective date, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
And I have an ordinance levying an ad valorem tax for 2022.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to levy an ad valorem tax for the city of LaGrange for calendar year 2022, to provide for separability, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
And just for the record, to follow up on Dr. Edmondson's comment, though, the city of LaGrange has not for 24 years, I think, collected a city ad valorem tax. Once again, the city will not collect a city ad valorem tax. The way this process works is the city council levies an ad valorem tax that is then rolled back by the local option sales tax, and the effective rate is zero. So it's the, the technical way that we, we get there. But I just wanted to follow up on your comment.
So may I elaborate on that? If you're paying attention, the, the sales tax is used to eliminate the property tax.
That's correct.
So it's kind of, it's kind of a little hard to understand, but it, it all works out that in the end, you don't get a bill for any property tax from the city.
As I tell folks, when they get their bill from Shane Fraley in November, whatever that bill is, zero of it comes to the city of LaGrange. Some of it goes to the county, some of it goes to the school board, zero comes to the city of LaGrange. And that's not true for most cities. I think even Hogan's on West Point levy eight or nine mils on top of the county and the school board. So it's a significant savings for the residents of LaGrange. Okay, we also have an ordinance modifying the water and wastewater user charges.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend Chapter 20-15 of the code in order to modify water and wastewater user charges, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
And as council will recall, this is the restructuring of the sewer charge to add the $5 base charge to the sewer, which is a component of what is built into the budget. Okay, we have no second readings or appointments. Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. We're very excited about the Atlanta Braves selecting LaGrange as one of the sites for their All-Star voting Walk of Fame installation. The Hollywood Walk of Fame like stars. She got a picture. We'll show you the pictures in just a moment. They are Walk of Fame like stars. They've been placed on Lafayette Square. The Braves created these temporary Walk of Fames across certain cities in Georgia. We're really proud to be one of them. And they have movie-style posters promoting this campaign as well. They are encouraging fans to vote in the first phase of their favorite Braves players for the All-Star Game through June 30th. Just go to braves.com/vote, and you can vote for all of your favorites at least five times a day. Also, keep Saturday, August 6th on your calendar, and this is why we believe that they called us to do this fun installation. We are the site of a Braves Trophy Tour at Sweetland Amphitheater. This is a free event, open to the community. We're really excited working with all of the community, all of the entities. We've got Hogan'sville, West Point, Troup County School System, everybody that we can get a part of. Again, it's free. We're going to have a drumline competition from the local high schools, a performance from the Braves heavy hitters and the Braves mascot blooper. Lots of fun activities planned. We cannot wait to see y'all there. Go Braves.
Go Braves. We've sort of become a baseball town between the success of some of our high school teams and the college and the Braves coming and paying, paying attention to us. So it's an exciting time. Appreciate your work on setting all of that up. We stand adjourned.